Are live, Ms. Falcone Schubert, the meeting is yours.
Okay, well, please call the meeting order at 6:00. Let's rise for the flag, please.
I have a speech.
Cheers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to open the Board of Education meeting with the opening statement according to the agenda. Sir Hallebeck, can you please call the roll?
Dr. Capella.
Here.
Mr. Davio.
Here.
Ms. Schram.
Here.
Mr. Chaffee.
Here.
Mr. DiStefano is absent. Ms. Polachina.
Here.
Mr. Citrich is absent. Ms. Gulan is absent. Ms. Falcone Schubert.
Here.
Can I please have a motion to move into executive session?
I'll make it.
Second.
On the motion by Mr. Chaffee, seconded by Ms. Polachina. Dr. Capella.
Yes.
Mr. Davio.
Yes.
Ms. Schram.
Yes.
Mr. Chaffee.
Yes.
Mr. DiStefano is absent. Ms. Polachina.
Yes.
Mr. Citrich is absent. Ms. Gulan is absent. Ms. Falcone Schubert.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. We will move into exec session and return at 7:00 P.M.
Yeah, exactly.
Can I please have a motion to reconvene?
I'll make it. I'll second it. Thank you.
On the motion by Ms. Polachina, seconded by Dr. Capella. Dr. Capella, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Davio.
Yes.
Ms. Schram.
Yes.
Mr. Chaffee.
Yes.
Mr. DiStefano is absent. Ms. Polachina.
Yes.
Mr. Citrich.
Yes.
Ms. Gulan.
Yes.
And Ms. Falcone Schubert.
Yes.
Can I please have a motion to approve the minutes for February for executive and regular session?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
On the motion by Mr. Chaffee, seconded by Ms. Schram. Dr. Capella.
Yes.
Mr. Davio.
Yes.
Ms. Schram.
Yes.
Dr. Mr. Chaffee.
Yes.
Mr. DiStefano is absent. Ms. Polachina.
Yes.
Mr. Citrich.
Yes.
Ms. Gulan.
Yes.
And Ms. Falcone Schubert.
Yes.
And next, move on to the superintendent and HIB report.
All right. For the month of February, we had two reported HIBs. This is our second reading for these, actually. And so the first was neither a HIB nor a violation of code of conduct, had to do with outside events outside of the school. The second event at the high school was a confirmed HIB that resulted in disciplinary consequences against the student for improper comments and behavior in the school setting. Did also result in parent conferences. And the board this evening, by accepting my superintendent's report, will again confirm that decision that it is a HIB. This evening, the Board of Education will adopt a preliminary budget that is the product of a lot of hard work over the last year and a half. As I share with the public this evening, what we had hoped would be a continued financial resurgence has not turned out that way. When I discuss with the board where we are at, we look at both revenues and expenditures. So our revenues are down almost $925,000 heading into next budget year. That is a result of a loss of $250,000 in federal ESAR aid that has gone away. It is also a reduction in the use of excess surplus to fund future year budgets. And this was something that we discussed at great length over the last couple of years. When you have a surplus above 2% statutory cap, you have to return that surplus back to the taxpayers. You can do it one of two ways. You can do it as checks, or you can simply appropriate that money into a future year's budget as revenue. The problem comes in when you don't have that money every single year to be able to continue to plug back in your budget. So if you think about it for a minute, as a child, if you get a $50 check every year at the holidays from grandpa, and every year you plan to go out and buy yourself a new pair of sneakers, but if one year, grandpa only gives you $25 at the holidays, and you still want that $50 pair of sneakers, you've got to come up with the money from somewhere else. And over the years, the last five years, the district has lost $8.4 million in state aid. We don't have money left at the end of the every budget year to be able to put into funding a future budget year. And that's why the reduction in additional revenues. On the expense end, you have your typical expenditure increases, your cost of your salaries. Health insurance went up almost $900,000 this past year. We are part of the state health benefits consortium, 14% premium increases. Those are things that we continue to work on and the state continues to address. We're not out of the norm in school districts across the state seeing those. If you have a car or a home and you insure those items, you know that your homeowner's insurance and your automotive insurance continues to increase. We are anticipating premium increases in the neighborhood of 11% to 12% on our casualty, property, and auto insurance. We are already part of a self-insured fund that handles all of our insurance. So moving to a private health insurance or a private casualty insurance company where that company is looking to make a profit doesn't benefit us because we don't pay out claims to a company to make a profit. We share in the risks with like-minded school districts and municipalities across the state. All told, going into this budget season, our budget was $3.5 million short. Okay? Over that time period, we have whittled down those costs. We are looking at making staff cuts across the entire district with a focus and an emphasis on trying very hard not to impact directly classroom instruction, not increasing class sizes in every grade level. We're trying very hard to be able to do that. And at next month's meeting, we'll be able to share more details of how we're getting ourselves into that position. But it means across the board cuts in a lot of different areas and some of the services that we continue to provide. It will most likely result in cuts to additional positions like some coaching staff. It may result in cuts to programs such as advisors and clubs and activities and some services that we provide. That's a reality. The budget increase that the Board of Education is seeking is 3.62%. That is in line with CPI, Consumer Price Index, your inflation for this past year, which was 3.57%. And I ask the public to be reminded of the fact that our tax increase is not on our total budget. Our total budget is $42 million. That tax increase is only on the local tax levy, which is about $29 million. So when you look at a 3.5% local tax increase, it actually equates to a 2.4% total budget increase, over 1% less than inflation. We will continue to face headwinds across the state. The state this year has said, we have fully funded the funding formula. And as I said to the board, it's a misnomer because while they have funded the dollar amount, that is the full funding formula, they have not allocated those dollars to all of the school districts as the formula says that money should be. In reality, Hopakong Schools is seeing a state aid increase of $172,000. According to the funding formula, we are entitled to an increase of $753,000. The state has limited now how much a school district can lose in any given year to no more than 3% of their state aid. But they've also now capped how much a school district can increase its state aid to no more than 6%. So we are owed $580,000 by the state of New Jersey for state aid that fully funds the funding formula. But I don't know if or when we will ever see that money. Because in order to prevent some people from losing out more than 3% decreases, they've had to hold back the increases from other school districts. Over that five-year period where we lost $8.4 million, the state didn't have a cap on how much you could lose. A 3% cap all those years ago would have taken the state of New Jersey 25 years to recoup that $8.4 million from our school district. We couldn't have lost more than $330,000 a year. Yet, in some years, we lost $2.1 million a year. Now that South and Central Jersey school districts and legislative representatives believe that's unfair and school districts shouldn't lose all of that money at once, they finally capped it, but not to our benefit. So we'll continue to work over the next month. We'll have our board budget hearing at our April Board of Education meeting where we'll fully lay out all of those details and how the budget impacts our students. But again, we'll do everything within our power to minimize those cuts and try as best we can not to have them directly impact classrooms on an everyday basis. And that's our goal. And we'll continue to look for ways to increase revenue. We're very limited with the options that can generate money as a public institution. So we'll continue to do that. All right. With that, I do want to turn the meeting over to our two student representatives. I have Natalia and Lilian. I know Lilian's going to go first, so the floor is all yours.
Okay. So this past month has been the end of the winter sports and the start of our spring sports. A lot of the winter sports had a very successful, very successful season with like cheerleading, basketball, wrestling, and esports, and all of the others as well, but especially those. And spring sports, as I said, are starting. This is the first time in a while that they've been able to be outside this early in the year. And our and our drama club is officially in full swing with our spring show, The Lightning Thief. This week, we are going to have and this week, we are going to have the pit orchestra joining us. There are three students who are in that. And they're all very dedicated, as are the actors and the rest of the crew. And we're all working hard. We're almost fully off script, which is very impressive this early in the season.
Great.
Thanks, Lily.
Lilian, when does the play start to light? What was the name, The Lightning Thief? When is that going to be performed?
Yes, it's May 1st through 4th.
May 1st through 4th. Thank you, Phil. Thank you, everyone.
The flyers are for taking.
In the past couple of weeks in the music department, we've had a lot of great accomplishments. Students in Tri-M, we visited a homeless shelter in Morristown, and we played with little kids while their parents attended a meeting. And we plan to go back every single month, hopefully for the rest of the year. We rehearsed and performed on the Devils game against Edmonton on Thursday. That was really exciting. And then the new music ensemble performed at Sussex County, at the Sussex County Teen Arts Festival. As Lilian said, The Lightning Thief was in full swing. Two students admitted artwork for the Teen Arts Festival, and they will be moving to the New Jersey State Teen Arts exhibit. And 12th grader Brandon Omahany was recognized as a Hopakong unsung hero. 11th grader took entry GPA last week. And academic team had two wins at our competitions against Sparta and Sparta Newland High School two weeks ago.
Thank you.
Thanks, Natalia. Thanks, Lilian. I appreciate it.
Can I please have a motion to move the superintendent and HIB report?
I'll make it.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
On the motion by Ms. Polachina, seconded by Ms. Gulan. Dr. Capella.
Yes.
Mr. Davio.
Yes.
Ms. Schram.
Yes.
Mr. Chaffee.
Yes.
Mr. DiStefano is absent. Ms. Polachina.
Yes.
Mr. Citrich.
Yes.
Ms. Gulan.
Yes.
Ms. Falcone Schubert.
Yes.
Moving on to item eight, acknowledgement and correspondence. We have some Hopakong Middle School Students of the Month. Ramay try.
Yeah, I'll let you go this month.
Okay, for grade four, we have Sophia and Ivana. Grade five, Dora, Vania, Dominguez. Grade six, Kinsley Erace. And grade seven, Roslyn Perez. Am I getting them here right?
No.
Congratulations, kids. You'll get your certificate from your principal.
Yep.
Do I have anyone here from parent-teacher organizations that would like to speak?
So for HEPTO, we are right now in Merle Footson Beyond, which is a reading program for pre-K through seven, where when they read, they get prizes. And then at the end of the year, we do an award ceremony. So that's in full swing. It's going great. We did a wild, an exotic animal show free for families a couple of weeks ago. It was really good. We're looking to do another pre-event in May or June, depending on when we can get space. We had a dance. We're doing another dance. We're getting ready for teacher appreciation. And HEPTO is partnering with PTSO to do a fun run the end of May. So that will be good. And then PTSO, our tricky tray is Saturday. So haven't bought tickets. Buy tickets. We're still accepting donations, accepting donations. Thing else going on there? Then we're going to try to do a dance also at some point, maybe. We're going to try. We'll see. And I just want to say, if there's any way that either HEPTO or the PTSO can partner with the board in the future, like next year to help fund some programs or whatever, like that would be awesome. So please, you know, keep in touch and everything.
Yeah, the word is out, which is good. We've had some contact from advisors and teachers and things like that. Just want to let everybody know, pre-sales end tomorrow. So you'll save some money if you buy by tomorrow. You have to order them online. You can pay Venmo or PayPal if you have something you want to donate. I'll give you my address. You can drop it off. And we also need some help still. We need runners, so you have to be 18 or over, and ticket sellers. So if you want to help, pick up a shift. It's a fun time. I'll be in the concession stand. Suzanne will be running around.
Thanks.
Nikki, did you have anything? She did all your things.
Stole your lightning.
Okay.
There's public comment.
All right.
That fun run, is that a
Is it a tricky train?
At the high school?
At the high school.
In the It starts at, if you buy a package early, you get to come in at 1:00. After that, it's 1:30. You can reserve a seat so you can be comfortable. Overflow seating will be in the bleachers, so we recommend reserving a seat.
The high school gym, yes.
Yeah, and calling starts at 4:00.
Okay.
And the concession stand is going to be open. We'll have the fryer going. Real pros now.
Suzanne, that fun run, is that the caller one?
Yeah.
Yes.
I can donate to that because right before COVID hit, I had bought a whole lot of stuff because that was a fundraiser that we were going to run. Then COVID hit, we weren't allowed to do it. So I actually have like a huge economy-sized box in my house I would love to give to you.
Would love to. Accepted.
And if anybody has any connections with food truck people, let us know for that.
Well, that's nice.
I'll give you the PBA.
Oh, yeah, all of their contacts.
Jersey Best.
Yep.
They coordinate with. And check with J&amp;J vendors, too. That's who does the municipal stuff.
Did you get that?
Yep.
I have her contact.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, and we have Mr. Renaud.
Hello, guys. How are you?
Good, how are you? We haven't seen you in a while.
Well, I was sick and I was away for two months in Florida, catching up to sunshine and enjoying myself. The best part of the whole thing was, it was a freebie. My brother and daughter didn't have the house rented, the condo on the beach. So Ellen and I went and ate like pigs.
You took one for the team, right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry I wasn't here. I just wanted to say, I am so grateful that the referendum passed. I think Jeff did an outstanding job. He gave immense amount of time to my wife, Ellen and I. We came in with a letter, gave insights, and we were very fortunate that he spent so much time with us. I thought the concept of the postcards were wonderful. A lot of people complimented us. I complimented you on that. The yellow signs were very good. If you know anything about advertising, Yip, Wicke, all their signs are yellow, and that's because people pay attention to the color yellow. I never knew that until I had an interview with someone from Wicke. Jeff, we are in the process of, and I will contact your office, we would like to invite you next month to give an overview of the budget to the Democratic Club if you're ready. If you're not, I will call you and just send you an email attachment, and we'll meet you. And we will be coming to the April meeting. We intend to support the budget. I think the information that got out tonight that I learned, I think is astounding. I think it's astounding. I think it's disgraceful, absolutely disgraceful. I think the attack, I am preaching to the choir, I really need to say this. I think what's going on in this country today with the attack on public education is awful, absolutely awful. As a former educator, as a former substitute teacher, we have gotten in contact with some teachers. Jeff, you were talked about quite heavily at Madeline Woodman's house the other night. Susan was 80.
I don't know if it's good or bad.
We put a fun link by Madeline, Tony Haynes. I don't know if you heard.
Yeah.
Janet, Janet Lynch passed away. She was 80. Nancy Moskowitz was there. She had a tremendous reputation, Jeff.
That was my error. They were, they were teachers, and I was in elementary school. Glad to hear they're doing okay.
So, you know, it was interesting. It was a nice evening, a good time. I was happy by all, a lot of good food. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it.
Does anyone else in the audience like to speak who didn't get to sign in? Okay, that will close. Public comment? Yes, yes. Can I please have a motion to move item 11, Finance, A through A through eight, which includes the budget?
I'll make it.
I'll second. Any discussion on the budget or finance, excuse me?
Can I just ask a question? Is the finance committee always done by committees by the board as a whole?
It's a operations committee. That'd be Natalia.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none.
So let me just read the budget resolution because I think it's important that everyone understands what we're looking at. So the item 11H is approval of resolution of submission of the tentative 2526 school budget to the Sussex County Superintendent, whereas the superintendent has presented to the Finance Committee and other members of the Board of Education a recommended 2526 school district budget in the total amount of $42,915,084 as follows, and whereas the board approves a local tax levy of $29,741,41,657. This local tax levy will increase by a total of 3.62%. That is composed of a 2% statutory cap increase of $574,073.78 and a 1.62% bank cap exception in the amount of $463,894.22 for a total local tax levy increase of $1,037,968. And whereas the budget includes the withdrawal of $1,369,296 from Capital Reserve for the purposes of paying down referendum bonds, and therefore be it resolved that the Hopakong School District preliminary budget for submission to the Sussex County Superintendent's Office is approved as follows on the meeting agenda of tonight, March 17, 2025. So again, as a reminder, included in your budget is $1.369 million that goes to pay down the cost of the referendum that the taxpayers approved last year. Included in that same budget is funding for the preschool expansion initiative that totals about $2.4 million. So when you look at that $42 million, take $2.4 million off the top for preschool expansion, we are basically a pass-through agent for that money, for the majority of it, and $1.3 million that is paying down bonds. Those funds, while they're included in our top-line budget, are not funds that we are directly using on classroom instruction. All right? They are going to pay private preschool providers required by the state for the preschool program that we can't directly house here, and the cost of those bonds. And again, the cost of those bonds increases slightly over the five-year term of the bonds. Again, we went out to referendum. Those bonds were sold in December. The interest rate on those bonds, five years, 2.92% was the rate that we got at auction, knowing that our current rate of return on our investments is about 4.15%. All right? All of the interest that is earned on the bond money goes directly back into the referendum project costs. It cannot be spent on any project that was not part of the referendum, and it cannot go back to the District General Operating Fund. It can only be used on cost overruns and direct projects or returned back to the payoff itself. Okay? So again, just an explanation of our budget for the upcoming year. That was a motion by Mr. Chaffee, seconded by Ms. Gulan. And if I could, call the roll. Dr. Capella.
Yes.
Mr. Davio.
Yes.
Ms. Schram.
Yes.
Mr. Chaffee.
Yes.
Mr. DiStefano is absent. Ms. Polachina.
Yes.
Mr. Citrich.
Yes.
Ms. Gulan.
Yes.
And Ms. Falcone Schubert.
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to personnel. Can I please have a motion to move 12A through G?
I'll make it.
I'll second. Is there any discussion on personnel? There are none?
On the motion by Ms. Polachina, seconded by Dr. Capella. Dr. Capella, your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Davio.
Yes.
Ms. Schram.
Yes.
Mr. Chaffee.
Yes.
DiStefano is absent. Ms. Polachina.
Yes.
Mr. Citrich.
Yes.
Ms. Gulan.
Yes.
And Ms. Falcone Schubert.
Yes.
I have a motion to move items 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17. So the rest of the agenda, I think, I think.
I'll make it.
Second. Okay, any questions on 13 through 17? Or discussion, excuse me? Hey, hearing none?
On the motion to move items 14 through 17.
13.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Great travel.
13 travel. Thank you. 13 through 17, on a motion by Mr. Chaffee, seconded by Ms. Schram. Dr. Capella.
Yes.
Mr. Davio.
Yes.
Ms. Schram.
Yes.
Mr. Chaffee.
Yes.
Mr. DiStefano is absent. Ms. Polachina.
Yes.
Mr. Citrich.
Yes.
Ms. Gulan.
Yes.
Ms. Falcone Schubert.
Yes.
Okay, before we adjourn, we have some time for board member comment. Anyone like to make any?
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
I'll watch the NCAA.
Hoops Mania tickets. Buy Hoops Mania tickets if you're into NCAA. There you go. You guys good?
And then watch the Yankees come to state this year.
Okay. All right. So just to wrap things up, I want to thank everybody for coming. So nice to have new board members here. I want to thank Veronica for volunteering to be on the municipal alliance with the town to see that partnership. So thank you. Just a couple of things that we spoke about, whether it was in committees or just Jeff and I, I want to make everybody aware of that in addition to the money that the state owes us, Sussex County as a whole is owed $8.5 million based on the lack of the school funding formula. And last week, all of the county superintendents, including Mr. Hallebeck, met and discussed this. And the county superintendent is going to speak with legislators on our behalf. So any information that we get based on the outcome of those conversations, he's going to share out with us, and then we'll share with you all because, you know, I hope that we can do a similar movement that they did in South Jersey and get some of this money that the district is owed. There's like this saying, I know you all know it, you get what you get and you don't get upset, right? And we have been getting or not getting a lot of things, and we are upset about it. But we just have to, at this point, take what we have and do what we can with it. And I really just want to thank all of the administrators, Jeff, and Matt, for literally crunching numbers and adding up pennies so we can have the least amount of impact on the classrooms. And it is a completely hands-on, all-hands-on-deck approach up here with the board and behind the scenes. And I just really want to thank you guys because, you know, we are going to feel it, but we're not going to feel it as much as we possibly could if you weren't turning over every stone, which you are doing. So thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And on
Just ask a question. Who's the county superintendent of schools?
Dr. Gail Carrick.
Could you spell her name?
C-A-R-R-I-C-K. C-A-R-R-I-C-K.
I forgot that. Can I please have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.